In your tears. Behold, I will hear you on a third day. On a third day. And you shall go up unto the house of the Lord. Six. And I will add unto your days fifteen years. And I will deliver you and this city out of the hand of the history. And I will defend this city for my own sake and for my several dear sakes, seven beloved ladies. Isaiah said, “Take a law of Pharaohs.” They took and laid it on the wall. And he recalled, “Honest people, Members of the Great Fifty-Four Lativeous.” When a certain voice is just read, we have a team, we are talking in my call. Esaka is evil. There is a prevention in every situation. There is a release wherever you are bound. The Bible says, and I say to you honest people, there was either year 730 B.C. When Esaka Faradah, he was taken far from place by their tradition. And so Esaka was a 13-year king of the tribe of Judah, who was part of Jerusalem. But in the 14 years of this people, Esaka was saved. For what recently, I don't know. If I were to tell me, you tell you. What did I was start the real story? And so, God sent Prophet Isaiah to go to Esaka. Tell that king he's saying he will die. So they say a house he called, “Let try you not to speak, honest people.” And let then the God tell you, “You are safe, but boss, I will tell you you will die.” I don't know what would be your fate, but you will die. But with Esaka, at that moment, the Bible said he went and turned his face to the wall and prayed. And God called to a quints. And what was the prayer quints? He called forth two. “Remember me,” that's one. Why honest people remember you? Esaka prayed to God to tell Esaka that God would remember him, what he had done when you were 13 of these people. Remember me? How hard before you with pepper hat, with two Ds, remember me? Not all the time God will remember you. But according to your deeds, your way of action, your intent will be proven by action. Then when you say, “God, remember me,” you will listen to you. Normally you are taking a left, then God will let you to be on the right side. They say, “God will remember you.” It's not true. Amen. I say amen, yeah. That was a prayer quints. Esaka called, brought to attention. It's your right to call God to a quints. But you know where you do. He will do your standing before. Then God will listen to your requests. Why Esaka was saved? Were you going to King? Where you going to sit? Or were busy? I don't know. People are some test. If God tells you not to mandela, oh, you enter all your bad comes and go to the hospital. But not in the case of Esaka, he never wanted to hospital. But he went to God, the same messenger. He do the same message, they go tell God, then you remember me for the past. Where is your past? What is your past record if God is so good to remember you? Amen. And he wept, he cried bitterly. And God, “Hurry prayer.” Then he told Prophet Isaiah, go to Esaka and hurry prayer and see a tear. Where are your tear? Remember that your tear or what tear you get? Isaiah went back to Esaka, told him, “The God said, “On the third day you will get well.” And even when you get well, you are fifty-three years on your age. That's a blessing. But you will wait for it. You will walk for it. In good faith. In good deed. In good mind. In Jesus' name. Take this message if you want to and lay by it if you so desire. And he will hear you. And one day, he will speak to you. Maybe you need drinks, but he might be sure. But all day you pour you all of the words and say, “Mama, your time is up.” God bless you, keep in Jesus' name. That is our prayer. All your words are enough. Let you are here, then you get here and live by it. This is another day that you are getting off. Because of your will, you say you will deliver us. Delivering like we are, who have gone a hundred years of years and still we are the same. Because our evil mind, our evil deeds are so many. Help us. Because only they say, “Okay, boss.” We are all wrong. We are sorry. Blessed nation of Nigeria, blessed leadership. Blessed session. And they want to thank for us and know that you are the God and brother of you can lead our way, that you can lead Jerusalem. We pray, we thank you, we give Jesus praise of you. Go forth. The honourable members of the House of Representatives of the Fifty-Four Lativeous Republic of Nigeria. Honorable Speaker of the House of Representatives, Republic of Nigeria. Honorable Speaker of the House of Representatives, Republic of Nigeria. For Sabaro County, Ombolo Lawrence Morris, Ombolo Yumene Bissiphe, Ombolo C. N. S. T. Bachele, Ombolo Swakoku Dennis, Ombolo T. Fala, Honorable Representative Samuel Arrogando, Ombolo Salomoni Sijoye, Ombolo Akara N. Gueye, Ombolo Fransa Oko Tuniya, Oyekewa Kolua, Ombolo T. Nkoun, Ombolo J. Samba, Ombolo P. N. Papé Flongo, Ombolo N. M. Kana Dieter, Ombolo N. U. B. Kamara, Ombolo T. S. N. W. P. S. Bo, Ombolo N. S. N. K. Adun, Ombolo P. S. O. Kante, Ombolo N. S. N. Badu, Ombolo M. S. Kao, Ombolo M. B. Do, Ombolo B. S. N. S. E. T. One, Ombolo T. M. G. S. Y. S. E. One, S. I. O. Kante, Ombolo P. N. A. N. O. Donkey, Ombolo S. A. N. S. E. T. U. M. A. R. President, Ombolo B. S. A. S. N. O. R. K. A. N. T. Ombolo C. M. By Dwe, Ombolo R. N. N. A. Z. P. L. O. N. Ombolo K. K. A. N. T. Ombolo P. Shari, Ombolo M. K. S. N. I. Ombolo N. S. N. K. A. R. Ombolo K. A. N. T. Ombolo R. N. N. A. V. S. T. U. I. Ombolo Isaiah M. P. S. O, Ombolo R. N. N. A. B. Ombolo Edward E. B. Kaffia, Ombolo M. M. R. S. N. A. Ombolo S. A. P. A. K. O. L. Ombolo F. K. A. N. T. Ombolo Fransé S. K. N. A. M. A. L. S. I. Ombolo B. S. A. Y. A. Ombolo T. M. S. E. T. Y. Ombolo A. G. A. M. A. R. N. U. B. O. F. A. N. Ombolo K. S. A. P. Y. A. O. Ombolo B. K. A. N. T. Ombolo P. R. S. O. F. Ombolo J. S. A. P. Y. S. O. B. Ombolo N. U. A. K. A. N. Ombolo S. A. B. I. K. O. G. Ombolo D. A. U. T. G. A. Y. Ombolo Roger H. E. B. W. N. A. Ombolo R. N. N. A. G. Ombolo J. S. A. P. Y. G. Ombolo R. N. N. A. K. Ombolo T. D. Y. S. E. T. O. B. Ombolo E. B. K. A. N. Ombolo M. K. A. N. T. Ombolo R. N. N. A. G. Ombolo A. G. A. O. P. A. S. Y. Ombolo M. K. A. N. T. Ombolo T. D. Y. S. E. T. O. B. Ombolo A. G. A. O. P. A. S. Y. Ombolo N. U. A. K. A. N. Ombolo T. M. G. A. Ombolo S. A. K. A. N. Ombolo N. N. A. V. S. E. T. Y. Ombolo R. N. N. A. B. Ombolo C. K. A. N. Ombolo T. D. Y. S. E. T. O. B. Ombolo D. K. A. N. Ombolo P. N. A. C. O. Ombolo Fransé S. Y. A. Ombolo Fransé S. U. B. S. E. T. Ombolo P. K. A. N. Ombolo A. G. D. K. O. Ombolo K. S. A. P. Y. E. Ombolo J. S. A. P. Y. E. Ombolo M. K. A. N. Honorable Speaker of the Honourable House of Representatives, here at the four honourable members present. The four afternoon. Honorable Speaker. And four speaking. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. The honourable members present in the hall of the forums.
The House of Lords Forums. This is a forum of forums. A House of Lords Forums who in doing they can continue business of Nigeria. So now that we speak of all the police to the Saginaw Arm to go into the offices of law records to have them informed about the commencement of this sitting here at the House of Representatives where they are starting to indulge about two persons in their respective offices. I'm aware of Lima County District Court Representative S. Brown and Gomi County District Court Representative Madame Finna LaSana in the former Gomi County Senator, now retired. You have a person aware who won in just ten minutes District Court by election, senior district in Gomi County. So indeed, folks keep bothering and this is where we have lots of forums so a forum so it cannot continue with the business of the Nigerian people. So indeed, so this is just evidence to the speaker announcement that the last forum so they cannot continue. So now that they have informed members of the legislature to be precise, the House of Representatives in their respective offices to come to session so that they can reach forum. And forum is about sixty-five, sixty-six persons. They call forum here at the House where they can commence the job of Nigerian people. So as when the business is right here to a radio, TV, we broadcast nine from the chambers of the House of Representatives. And this is where we are. Here obviously, other media institutions are here. Is this the chamber like the chambers of Madam Major S. Y. A. N. Deputy Chief, that's the chief. Situations, they are all here tennis to make sure. Doing a good job. I don't advocate. So you see, law records.
Honorable Speaker, honourable members of the Honourable House of Representatives, here are forty-three honourable members present on the five option, one person posing begin. Thank you very much. Thank you. The honourable members present, we have a forum.
Now we have a forum so that people's business can be discussed.
For them, they're sitting in a special section. The Honourable House of Representatives, the three separate stations here in Nigeria. Two separate seats. Please take them. One section calls all, two prayers, three work call, four reading corrections, a memory and a election agenda, five court of petitions, six from a standing on these forums only that we have the general reports on the House's journey committee on bringing my parents here, G. S. A. National Security, on the follow-up deals. On a bike to establish on a international intelligence agency, for the program and money laundering terrorists on IT preventive measures and policies of France, I will find what we want. The report my House's committee on on an IT to amend chapter fourteen, chapter eight, the penitent forum in Nigeria to create section fourteen point five, IT of human sacrifice. Same for special committee's report. It's come for bills, motions and resolutions under the right communication from the environmental base here. Representative Gomi County District District Six, payment and indulgence of the Honourable House for passage consideration from the follow-up deals. One, I created administrative district on O. N. O. R. A. In Gomi County along the courts, along with the courts as we provided here in and providing for a governance assistance. And I to amend chapter two, some section which we were to reach our pet drastic contra observance laws, like the Tommy crime with record of all advice to provide for some chapters that are two point six, lateral district eight, nine business or three such states. Now that we have the induction of Honorable Finna Bory, LaSana, Representative the right Gomi County lateral district one, Samuel M. Kamau Brown Senior, Representative the right Gomi County lateral district one. The communication from Honourable Dr. Rosanna G. D. H. A. Representative Roses Martin, lateral district one, seeking the indulgence of the Honourable House to invite people to experience the following. As I said, the director of the EBA has selections to give a plan for reducing the final body, the use of passive assets and resourcing the overall developmentally friendly material. And the Minister of Transport and Civil General of the National African National Police along with the Chief of Traffic who has asked us to increase the recklessness on the path of both services by the streets and hotels on a major highways of the country. See, communication from the Honourable Supreme Court of Nigeria submitting a bill of information on the case for Honorable Yekewa Kalwaj in comments by the Honourable House of Representatives is not in court. The various leadership of the citizens' aviation in the world of Nigeria to respond to the complaint of a ledge, of a ledge, destruction of property and violation of their rights of residents and citizens of Nigeria by through the actual of personnel of the citizens in this area of Nigeria. Ten messages to leave in the church. This is speaker of the Black Maquis of Honourable House of Representatives. That was a reading of the church. But the last church.
Thank you very much. Honorable Speaker, the reading of the agenda was a wonderful presentation. It's working, it's working. Thank you. Mr. Speaker, Mr. Who presiding distinguished police, I've been listening to the reading of the agenda by the chief flag. I saw move and by the disciple there, that this agenda be accepted and enough for our today's deliberation and subsequently from time to time. So, sir.
Honorable police, Ombolo respect and abuse are a good. All these are only in the university. Yes. Call for petitions.
There are no petitions for this.
Call for petitions.
There are no petitions for this.
Call for standing for these appeals.
Yes, sir.
Who is committees in charge of that?
We love you.
Yeah, why? Thank you for answer. Okay, they are not here. They are not here.
She didn't show it here. She is smart.
This is here. Where is this? Still this, okay. So we will be further.
Yes. Nice. Nice. So, do it. We can't really. When they, when they, ah, do it. The kind of result, the kind of time, yes, sir. The kind of. Yeah, already. Yeah.
Thanks. Call for special committee's reports.
There are no special committee's reports.
Call for those reports.
But she can't, he doesn't. I don't want it. Sir. Sir. You coming. This thing with people, we have been for nothing. Yes, I have one. The way you do the ups. No, I didn't. I didn't. No, the best thing I've got for you. You're right there.
Oh, the August, that man, he was a man. He was a man, bro.
You don't tell me, right? I don't know. I miss that. I, I was, I was my, I was my. There, there. What? There's five friends. Sure, yeah. He told me.
This is your speaker's address.
Hey, I'm well. Hello, Tommy. Come in. And you, Adam, Adam, come. Tell me what I said. You were a gentleman. Go behind and there, go wait. I finished.
As an elder screen, I need you.
Hey, sorry. Oh, she don't go to.
Ellis is borrow you.
But I can save the parent.
Yeah, yeah, for him, yeah.
About that customer.
Sorry, you were quite a good one. I heard you were looking for a run. You know that you are, you are Italy.
Yeah, there are men, give you.
He saw you. Ah, okay, my.
Uh, members of the press, will you allow your name, please?
You ready? When you ready to check all the high and see. When you ready to check all the high and see.
So, that we await the. In this month, you know, we just had a brief course with insertion due to the induction ceremony that, uh, will keep up. And a moment from now, have about three persons to be adopted in, uh, office. Uh, representative of, uh, Brangida County District One and, uh, Bomi County District One, Nema County District One, where Brangida County District One, which is in O. So, three lawmakers will be adopted in office. We have expected offices today. You will authorize, uh, folks to radio TV. You will be here to. As you can see this. Former representative, now Senator of Nema County, in the chambers of the House of Representatives. They are coming to see the induction ceremony of, uh, the person who saw seriously, he is district, now he is Senator, Senator Gerald Meyerman of Nema County, most powerful county of Nema. And we also have Senator Edwin Lovin, who has been in the place. Uh, he took, uh, very last and took the seat after he left the representative seat. District One, Bomi, he got replaced by, uh, Madame Tina Bori Lasana. So, women's participation, uh, within the legislature continue to increase. Larry, the arrival of the Chief Leg and Deputy. The deputies here. Hey, let me. Other journalists from Brangida, in Nema, Brangida, have been denied entry because they are not accredited. Uh, only legislative reporters that are accredited are allowed to cover such an operation. And now the section has rare confirmed information. Trying to get in touch with the Chief Leg of the Honorable House of Representatives. Uh, she's Madame. Major Sign. The arrival.
It's a senior, it's a co-residing officer, honorable ladies and gentlemen. Uh, in my hands. A certificate of election from the National Elections Commission in favor of two persons in a vague indulgence to allow the reading. Republic of Liberia National Elections Commission Certificate of Election. This is the certificate that Samia Kiman Brown Senior has been duly elected, represented for Electoral District One, Nema County, Republic of Liberia, in the legislative election here on November sixteenth, twenty-one. In testimony there to the right of the authority in our state as commissioners of the National Elections Commission. Hereby effects our signatures and seal of the commission on this Friday of December eighth, twenty-one at the headquarters of the National Elections Commission in the city of Nguwokwe, County of Nonsorado, Republic of Liberia. And this constitutes legal and efficient authority. Signs, Honorable Justine Paul G, Commissioner, Councilor Anderson Morgan, Howard, Commissioner, Honorable Basile Leo, Fungwa, Commissioner, Honorable Flo, Aslay Sawyer, Commissioner, Councilor P, Tabla Reeves, and Court Chairman, Court Chairperson, and Honorable Devi Etta Brown Lasana, Chairperson. Republic of Liberia National Elections Commission Certificate of Election. This is the certificate that Finna Wari Lasana has been duly elected, represented for Electoral District One, Bomi County, Republic of Liberia, in the legislative election here on November sixteenth, twenty-one. In testimony there to the right of the authorities, authority in our state as commissioners of the National Elections Commission. Hereby effects our signatures and seal of the commission on this Friday of December eighth, twenty-one at the headquarters of the National Elections Commission in the city of Nguwokwe, County of Nonsorado, Republic of Liberia. And this constitutes legal and sufficient authority. Signs, Honorable Justine Paul G, Commissioner, Councilor Anderson Morgan, Morgan, Howard, Commissioner, Honorable Basile Leo, Fungwa, Commissioner, Honorable Flo, Aslay Sawyer, Commissioner, Honorable Waka Ed, Dukun, Commissioner, Councilor P, Tabla Reeves, Court Chairperson, Honorable Devi Etta Brown Lasana, Chairperson. This is Speaker, this is all, that is of this, honorable ladies and gentlemen. That was the reading of the certificate of election. I presented you, Speaker, Honorable Leader, Entirety of the induction office.
Thank you very much. Tell me. You may now come up for your congratulations. And, uh, to call, Honorable Finna Wari Lasana, represented in West Bomi County, elect your district number one. And so, Samia, Kiman, Father, Senior, Representative, Representative, you may now be elected. Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Now that you have come here with a determination to serve your people who want to say that you have travel on a journey that would be fulfilling, I believe for your people. They said we would like to induct you into office and repeat after me. As I must still remain the distant representative, the colleague. I
Saman.
I Saman Kima, brother. I should not want to be my country.
I, she had very last name, issue number one.
Who saw this way? This way. That I will support. I will support. For hope. For protect and defend and defend the constitution and laws of the Republic of Liberia. The constitution and laws of the Republic of Liberia. They have truth and allegiance. They have truth and allegiance. In the Republic. In the Republic. And with faithfully. Faithfully. Consciousness. Consciousness. And impartially. Impartially. It's charged and duties. The time and duty of this trip. And Honorable Representative. To the best of our abilities. So happy God. So happy God. So, thank you very much. You will then a gift. Now that thank you so much. Actually, we will now call the carcasses to escort them, to escort them to the sea. Yeah, Bomi and Nima carcasses.
So, ninety thirty already. They were saying.
So, guys say guys say we would like to entertain police, please have a seat. We want to allow Honorable Master to give us. We like to give a peace. We might on the current position from Felix to in loss in justice.
They are by system.
Our distinguished officers distinguished colleagues our final match, we need to get the carcass to Liberia our international and national partners. Tell us a senior, Deschue, Deschue number one, Bomi County. They come out with the folks and say prayers.
Honorable
Oh, put the words there.
Honorable, our last caller, on here, he didn't have the prayers.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so the unders, the speaker and members
Thank you so much. Standing on this, as you see, hold the door. Everyone every morning, everyone for the process that led to this ceremony. I am grateful, Honorable, familiar performing part of this role by the fifty national elections of Republic of Liberia in my capacity as a woman. Their woman, my leave so their legitimate status made their very strong story in so much success. And I can recall I started my political journey in two thousand fifteen. And looking at our citizens we talked to them and at the time it told us that this time around we in need of Honorable Sue to lead us. So that listening to our citizens drawn them twenty seventeen to elect him, elect him back his true as our next representative. So it was so wonderful to have him as a representative of Senior Deschue. If he came here, he did a streaming well for our beloved Deschue. Which today, the county announced, so it necessary for making Senator for Bomi County. So due to the stays and vacancy in senior they asked that I should contest on a position that they've been here to be. So I just want to tell the people of Senior Deschue, thank you so much. The story is wrong, but just to say thank you to our citizens, we let you be the caucus of Bomi County. Thank you so much. And let me, I want to extend my thanks and appreciation through those that supported me in my political journey. So the citizens of Senior Deschue, I say thank you so much for reinforcing that confidence, making me your representative to represent you at the lower house. I say thank you to the lovely people of Senior Deschue. And not forgetting the women group that pushing, women have sent attention into the house that stood by me. I say thank you so much. In the national but then you enter my combat, my Deschue and be along with me. You told the women how it is necessary for us to have women in the house. And they're listening to you people. And they took the lead. And today my head rate came from ninety five percent women in Senior Deschue. Not forgetting the dynamic legitimate corpus of the lower house. I say thank you so much. So the chair was like was on a side who led the delegation that went and come be along with me. I said thank you. Thank you so much. Not forgetting the NEC who went in our county and conducted a successful election in our Deschue. It was peaceful and transparent. I say thank you to NEC for that brilliant work. And to the government of Liberia I just want to take this time to say thank you to the government of Liberia for providing the phone that our election was going to be done. And thanks to them also that especially President Dr. Nwam to being that president, he was a appreciation to be there at that time. I thank you so much to the government of Liberia. So I just want to say thank you to everyone. And lastly I use, I'm not going to use it to get some to bring to this by the concern or issue that is unfolding in our county. We, we are been told by our, our women group in Bomi County, concerned women group that our children, our girls, our sister and left town, trafficking, took them to unknown destination. And we found out it's a country, an Arab country that called Oman. And we started to hear this information about a week ago. We thought it was sooner in Bomi County. But it is all over Liberia in the fifteen counties where they have their agents. Taking our girls from here, carrying them to Oman. In the name of seeking job they would be paid a amount of three thousand and send them to school or scholarship. But now they are demanding to come back because of high labor. They wake up from four AM and go to there by twelve PM. So that they actually all draw us in despite that our girls will come back to our Deschue. Now, dear, thank you so much.
Honorable Speaker who is the office distinguished colleagues who have been in our county, the legitimate corpus. Our here not the people of Nima County. Thank you very much for allowing us to join the legislature. This is the full legislature of the Republic of Liberia. Thank God that Nima has spoken. I will always ask your indulgence to accept Nima opinion. You also join this august body to assure to open your hands for all to work together for improvement of the Republic of Liberia. To Nima citizens you have spoken. You were a large advocate when you are said and making the matter in a physical that you nature. Thank you, Honorable Speaker. Thank you distinguished colleagues. Thank you, Nima County Legislature Corpus for allowing us to come here to represent our people so that our people for that can be heard why you have started we have come to join you for us to sing. Thank you, Honorable Speaker. Thank you who presiding. God bless Nima County, Deschue One. God bless Nima County. God bless the Republic of Liberia. Thank you very much.
Mister Speaker, the district Speaker, the same way police. You know, Mister Speaker, why they say I don't wait for me to ask friend here today? And our ten and appreciation goes to the citizens of Bomi County, my state's senior district. Because they make sure that another woman is in the house again. So we want our county to give you a one Bomi County. So much I try, I can show Mister Speaker, we still believe. We want to tell you, thank you for everything that you have done for us today. Our citizens of Bomi County, we highly appreciate what you did, where the women have received us and the women have selected us. Because you have left all your business schedule to go to Bomi to campaign for us. We all were there. So we want to tell you, thank you. We want to assure you people that we all work together as a unit to We want to assure you people that we all will work together as a unit to achieve what so ever was supposed to do in our Bemi County. And I will always say this, when you vote for one woman, you help one woman, you still know that you have more than second to save the children. So thank you so much. God bless everyone at home.
Thank you, Honorable Speaker. Honorable Speaker, who presiding, distinguished colleagues. Words are in anyway for us today as we warmly open our arms to welcome our plus one. The process was serious, the process was challenging, but we thank the women and the men of Senegal District, Bomi County for electing a powerful young woman to come and join us. We want to thank the people of Bomi County because they have proven to us that they make wise decisions. Bomi is a county that has a third term female lawmaker in the person of Honorable Pata Pata Sayon. And the caucus visiting with her in her district have seen that she is not just an ordinary representative. She is a powerful force there. And so we thank you all. We thank all of our people or chiefs that are here present. You all know we have something up our sleeves and we are still appealing that four point five of the new election law being passed very soon. Thank you for your support.
Let me take this time to on behalf of the Nima Legislative Caucus. Honorable Sanyo, Yakima Brown, Tignia. And subsequently congratulate Honorable Pinda Gori Lasana for being first elected by the citizens of Electoral District Number One, Nima County. And today, inducted as a bona fide member of the fifty-fourth legislature. We like to welcome you, Honorable Brown. As you come into this house, although you may have been elected by Electoral District Number One, Nima County, you come to provide service beyond Electoral District Number One. You come to serve the entire population of Liberia, looking out for what is good and better for us as a nation. So we like to welcome you. As a caucus, all of us, we open our arms to you. We stand in readiness to give you the relevant guardians that is required to be a lawmaker of substance. Lawmaker that can discern between what is good and what is not good. So we say welcome. And to our colleague from Bomi, we say welcome as well. Today, you have been adopted and you have added on to the Women Legislative Caucus. As a he or she in this legislature, we say welcome. We'll work along with you and your newly adopted colleague so that the tenure at the legislature will be successful. Thank you and God bless us all.
Thank you, thank you, Honorable. And to our place, you have been adopted. You have been adopted to support a bold act and protect the constitutional laws of the Republic of Liberia. That said, we want to say thank you very much for a very just fight. Congratulations again. Thank you. To the congresses, we want to say thanks for your support. Your colleagues, we want to say thank you very much. God bless all of us. Thank you so much. Next, Honorable Chief Plaid. So to those, to those behind there of our special guests are here, we want to say that please make way for them to sit at the bar. As we continue with our celebration. Mr. Speaker, if they want to leave, they can leave. If they want to stay, they can stay. We give them the space behind.
As I said, Sachan come to stand still as legislators are making here as to the nearest decisions to be made after inducting two of the colleagues in the chambers. Now they are legislators. So this is it right here. And I went into the chief plaid to commence a section with the agenda for today's awareness. So this is where we have legislators represented by the county west of Bomi County.
In the Honorable Supreme Court of the Republic of Liberia, October ten, eighty-three twenty-one, Chairman Justice Abah. Chairman Justice Abah. Our younger commander for the city of Malobia Liberia is informant versus the House of Representatives National Legislature of Liberia by any House Speaker that the Board of Chambers of the City of Malobia Liberia is present. Republic of Liberia. So the General A must be present in the stadium. My show Supreme Court of Liberia, or the deviated Malobia. Do I never come in here to notify the House of Representatives, National Legislature of Liberia by any House Speaker that the Board of Chambers of the City of Malobia Liberia is present in a book entitled, it calls of action to appear, a filing against returns before the respondent is to speak Abah. Associate Justice of the Honorable Supreme Court of the Republic of Liberia is at the chambers, at the Supreme Court, at the Supreme Court Room Temple of Justice on Monday, September thirteen twenty-one, at hour nine AM. To show us what information has prayed for should not be granted. You are far committed to ensure the respondent get into five days returns to this rate in the office of the court of this Honorable Court, Honorable before the set thirteenth day of the seven eight thirty-one. And to re-talk to them the original and leave a copy of this deal of information of the respondent. As to when and how you shall have access this rate, we will make known by filing your official returns here to on the back of the original copy of this rate in the office of the court of the Honorable House, Honorable before the set thirteenth day of the seven eight forty-one. And for so doing, this shall constitute a legal and sufficient retaliation. Given Honorable Manheen a seal of the Honorable Supreme Court of the Republic of Liberia, tell you to seven eight forty-one until the same moment, like Supreme Court. In the Honorable Supreme Court, Republic of Liberia, thirty minutes after one ten eighty-three twenty-one, Justice Chairman Abah. Our younger commander on the city of Malobia Liberia is informant versus the Honorable House of Representatives, National Legislature of the Liberia by any House Speaker of the Board of Chambers of the City of Malobia Liberia is present. Giving out of the case. Our younger commander on the city of Malobia Liberia petition versus the House of Representatives, National Legislature of Liberia by any House Speaker of the Board of Chambers of the City of Malobia Liberia is present. Informant's information. Informant most respectfully informs your honor and dishonorable Supreme Court in a book entitled, calls of action and the following fact, factual and legal reasons as shown, as shown to it. One, informant says, in July of forty-one, informant file a petition for prohibition against the respondent in pursuit of this Honorable Court to prohibit respondents legal, illegal of denying the informant petition defenses. Two, informant says, that during the proceedings, the lawyers of both parties to include representatives on both parties agreed that the Chairman's Justice at them will determine issues of the rate that the respondent should grant the informant all of his rights and privileges as provided for in the laws of this republic and to include the House of Representatives full of honors. Three, informant says that parties agreed that a respondent will pay for the informant's salaries or any show or other rights as the parties for the informant. However, informant says that respondent has failed, refused and neglected to pay informant's salary and benefits for the month of June twenty-one and also refused to have the informant included in the representative's chatroom. Informant says that this passion of respondent is contrary to agreement before his Honorable Joseph S. Nowey of which the said justice declined on issuing a rate to prohibit the respondent. Four, informant says a failure or refusal of respondent to perform as per agreement sanctions by his Honorable Joseph Nowey is playing contrary to the law of this republic and in this sense to the Honorable Supreme Court of Liberia. Five, informant says that during this discussion of proceedings, lawyers of different parties assured the court of the chairman that all of the parties who perform as the given, the parties in consideration of the respondent's self-namely. Wherefore, in view of the following, as a circumstance is informant most respectfully praise your honor and this Honorable Court to pass to respondent to pay informant's salary and benefits for the month of June twenty-one. Further, informant says that your honor will grant that all same legal and just, legal, just and equitable respectfully submitted, informants by any councils, Chairman Sa, Boma Councilor for informants, Council of Finiananga, Council of Finian. Informants, this is speaker, this is a court beside of this Honorable Justice. That was the reading of that was the reading of, 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 of information from the Supreme Court of Liberia.
Who presiding, distinguished colleagues. My observation is that the communication from the Supreme Court was read to the hearing of this august body. And my view that was sufficient. The bill of information being read to us now should be a work of the Judiciary Committee. And I might add, who may have other leader minds here. I don't know, it will undermine the work of the Judiciary Committee, who begin the discourse. So I would suggest that having had a reading of the letter from the Supreme, the Honorable Supreme Court, uh, the bill of information and that communicated actually immediately turn over to the Judiciary Committee, who will proceed now, either and bring us accordingly. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
So is the motion made?
It's an observation and if you wanted a motion, then I can.
So is the issue not debatable?
Right.
Because it enhances what a nation, you know, of liberal branches and the respects of our judiciary. So is, is normal for us to tell everybody, committee. As said, is this a consensus? So committee, please take charge and act accordingly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Respond, dispose, we are loud.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. So yeah, the issue of our citizen engagement. He said, do not hear. Oh, my God, tell me. Information regarding the citizen engagement. Honorable Speaker, Honorable Court Presiding, Honorable Ladies and Gentlemen of this august day. With regards to the issue of the citizens engagement board. Entire leadership appearing here today, we cannot speak. On behalf of Madame Bro and her team for not coming here. But what information can serve this body is that Madame Bro came around here today. With a group of women and so then. I have shared a tip with some of the people is on some TV and other TVs. Abusing this honorable body. You see the unkind gestures, the provocative gestures that she is making to us, the rude gestures. Our our offices are dirty, our homes are dirty, if you listen to a tip kindly. For me, this issue is a plenary issue and plenary needs to deal with it. Therefore, I ask that this document be open for further discussion.
Court presiding, distinguished colleagues. My observation, the figure is that. Madame Mary Brown Russo and leadership of the citizens driver it is by invited. I am not sure plenary has yet been informed. On to appear and if if she has not appeared, is there communicating somewhere? Is there any information from our chief clerk at the watch nine year? And if she is not here, if she is not here.
So that's a good question, let me allow to show your question.
Exactly.
Then you will say that this is very interesting.
Thank you.
Thank you. So. Honorable Chief clerk, uh do you have any or? The deputy, you sitting on there, do you have any indication why uh the honorable bro is not present?
Mister Speaker. Mister Court Presiding, Honorable Ladies and Gentlemen. As carried matters of plenary. Ready to a communication received from honorable judge. Were able to write the leadership of the citizens in national board of Liberia to be here today. But up to present. The office of the chief clerk has not received any information as to. Why she is not here now, I mean the leadership is not here now or not.
Thank you very much, Honorable Summer.
Honorable Speaker, Court Presiding, Distinguished Police. The letter did not specify what time Madame Bro was supposed to be here. If that is done, then we will move forward to deciding what to do next. Thank you.
The Honorable Clerk is going to end here and as I said. Today. Today, so has this on schedule here on your agenda, Mr. President. Hey, what is, please, what is, so what does it say there? What does it say there? Please say what it says. No, no, no. So, 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 oh, chief, deputy chief clerk, this be the the letter. Therefore, the.
December three, twenty twenty one.
Marco, Marco.
The leadership. December three, twenty twenty one, the leadership. Citizens Engagement Board of Liberia, Liberia. There are citizens engagement board leadership. I present compliments and have the honor by directing of the House of Representatives. In special session to inform you that you have received. A communication from honorable Supreme Court Judge. Representative most of the county elected district or serving. Complaining of the alleged the structure of properties and violation of the rights of residents. And people of Liberia. As well as whipping or flogging or hand popping and impressing them. And ignorance and residence. By and through the actions of the personnel of the citizens engagement board of Liberia. In view of the affirmation, I have been instructed to invite you. The leadership of the citizens engagement board of Liberia to appear before the plenary of the honorable House. On Tuesday, December seven, twenty twenty one, at twelve noon. With sentiments of highest esteem remain sincerely, Yeshi Pugile, at the chief clerk. And that communication was received. On. The same Friday, since the letter written on the third of December twenty twenty one at four four fourteen PM.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
I know I can fool you. Goodness, sir. Court Presiding, distinguished colleagues.
She love yes.
Having heard a reading of the letter of invitation addressed to Madame Bro. And but King. And having noticed that we are far. Almost three hours beyond. The specified time was to have order of honor the invitation. I believe strongly, Mister Speaker, and if I were to be granted the opportunity to make a motion. I will move that Madame Bro be invited. To come and showcase why she should not be held in contempt for her action. But deliberately determined that she cannot honor an invitation from this office body. And subsequently. Attempting to disrupt activities. At the compounds of this office body of the legislature for that matter. By appearing before the entrance of the legislature this morning. With unknown men and women dressed in all kind of colors. So uh. Goodness, sir. I will appreciate if I am granted the opportunity to introduce that into a motion.
No, that's a good observation, but I accept for a motion for honorable there. Uh. This is a country of laws. And we, through our all time respect. For the today, I told him. Having said that, I knew that. This house. To sign the leadership, the citizens engagement committee. Or appear here, showcase why we should not be in contempt. For supporting our work today, uh for failure to appear. When requested, but be at first today. So. Honorable distinguished colleagues, we are always saying that one is a boy. Yes, I know you are a hugger. To the movement. I will be ready to vote if we can accept this simple amendment. And before the amendment. I just want to briefly give an ah of him. Mister Presiding, co-presiding colleagues. It were professional swimmer sat by the B side and a professional player got drawn. That professional swimmer and now comedian Krabba have reached mora condo. Madame Bro have been appointed by the president. To clear all Moro here. Oh, and she be going here and there. Your readiness, please. My readiness is. Mister Presiding, for the fact that Madame Bro not only bringing people. But to pronounce on this ground that this place is a dirty place. It is an affront to the legislature. Therefore. Madame Bro. To be made to come along with a lawyer. Honor the contempt that you can be made to come along with a lawyer to showcase why. Well, that's a very good.
I'm ready.
Oh, my God. Honorable Speaker, Honorable Court Presiding, Honorable colleagues. Um, to the movement, I will be ready if you will add. The the summoning of Madame Bro's principal. The mayor of the city of Moroia to appear with her the same time she is appearing. I will check. Well, that's a very good.
I'm ready.
Honorable, you. Honorable Speaker, Court Presiding, Distinguished. I will be ready to vote uh till the morning. If Madame Bro uh will be paid to appear on twice in a week. Well, that's a very good. All those can figure. They get known by saying here. Against. But Chief clerk, please add the call. Please, on uh some. Excellent answer. We uh. Are doing.
So folks, this is it, wherever you are, this is the TV, this is how we love to come. The Speaker of the fifty fourth legislature has a joint section, so. This is how we love to leave you, my name is Shadr Desner Brown, correspondent, legislative correspondent in Liberia, Baba Amah.